Good evening and welcome. I'm Andrea Mull Ryan and I'm a board member for the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County. And I'm so happy that you're joining us here this evening for the first of our debates with the candidates for Lackawanna County Commissioner. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization and we are comprised of both men and women, and we invite you to join us. And for those of you in the audience this evening, you'll find a membership form in your program. And for those of you at home, I invite you to visit our website at LWVlackawanna.org. I would ask that those of you who are present this evening, silence your mobile devices so that we can move through our evening uninterrupted. The candidates are seated on the stage in alphabetic order. They were not given any of the questions in advance. Lackawanna County Commissioner Form of Government requires that we vote for two of these candidates on Election Day, and the top three will be elected to office. Generally, they're noted as two Majority Commissioners and one Minority Commissioner, but it is actually the top three vote-getters who will be our county commissioners come January. And in a minute, I will introduce the candidates to you. The League's policies for debates are available on our website, again, at LWVlackawanna.org. Mr. Spano, again, who I'll introduce in a minute, is included on the panel this evening because he is running an active campaign and notified the League. And again, what our policies are, are available to all of you on our website. We do have a media policy that candidates are not allowed to clip pieces of our debates for their purposes, but that they can certainly link to our debates in their entirety. Our debates are organized by volunteers, we are all volunteers here this evening, as a public service to help voters make informed choices. When watching the debate, we think that you should ask yourself questions like these in order to help you judge the performance of the candidates. Do they answer the questions directly, give specifics, and support their positions with facts? Do they talk about their own policies and positions or mostly attack their opponents? Can they realistically carry out the promises they are making? And do they show how their experience qualifies them to hold office? We ask that during the debate, you hold your applause and any comments from the audience until the end. We only have 75 minutes, and we have a lot of questions for these esteemed candidates this evening. This will be approximately a 75-minute debate, and the candidates will answer the same set of questions, and they'll answer them in a round robin fashion. All of the questions have a 90-second response limit, and we've asked the candidates to try to adhere to that as much as possible. And they'll all be allowed two, up to two rebuttals of one minute each. They can use the full two-minute allotment at one time if desired. There are no opening statements from the candidates, and they will be allowed a two-minute closing statement. We drew names for who would give the first, who would answer the first question, and then again, for who would give the first closing statement. Mr. Spano will give, will answer the first question, and Ms. Cummings will answer, will give the first closing statement. So with that, I would like to introduce the candidates to all of you this evening. Lorraine Cummings, first, again seated alphabetically, is a graduate of Riverside Junior/Senior High School and Lackawanna County Vocational/Technical School, where she earned a degree as a licensed practical nurse. She serves as President/CEO of Laura Mar Home Care, a small business she has owned and operated for more than 16 years. She has been an active community leader and is the Republican Chairwoman of the 114th Legislative District of Lackawanna County, and she also serves as President of the Marjory Scranton Council of Republican Women. She is the mom of four adult children and has four grandchildren. Welcome this evening, Lorraine. Bill Jones is Lorraine's running mate on the Republican ticket. Bill is from South Abington Township. He holds a Bachelor of Science degree in Human Development from Penn State at State College. And in 2007, he was elected to serve as Auditor of South Abington Township and has served as Auditor since then. He has worked in the energy industry as a public affairs specialist with the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company, a Kinder Morgan Company. And as a public affairs specialist, he's had the opportunity to represent TGP in the northeastern United States. He works in a public affairs firm now as an associate, where he provides public expertise to several of the firm's clients. He's the son of Attorney Bill Jones and Dr. Margaret Billing Jones, and has several siblings in the area as well. Welcome, Bill. Thank you for being here this evening. Our next candidate, again seated alphabetically, is Jerry Notariani. Jerry is one of the two Democratic candidates. He is from Scranton. He is a graduate of Central Scranton High School, and he studied accounting at Wilkes University. He's an independent businessperson, sole proprietor of AIT Auto Parts in Scranton, former elected official serving as Lackawanna County Register of Wills and on the Lackawanna County Government Study Commission. He's the former Democratic nominee for the Mayor of Scranton and the former Chair of County and City Democratic Committees. He is a civic volunteer on the Scranton Zoning Board of Appeals, Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency, the Board of Act 101 Program at the NEIU, and served on the Board of Directors of St. Michael Schools, School for Boys. Jerry is married to the former Susan Baumann, and they have two children, Frances and Laura. So, welcome, Jerry.
Thank you.
Jerry's running mate on the Democratic ticket is Patrick O'Malley. So sorry. Patrick was elected to the Office of Lackawanna County Commissioner in 2011. He is a lifelong resident of Scranton, a graduate of West Scranton High School, and he and his wife Christine are the proud parents of two sons, Patrick III and Vincent. Pat is the son of the late Anne Marie and Paul Hook O'Malley. Before being elected Commissioner, Pat served three terms on the Scranton School Board. He served as Assistant Director of the County Department of Works and Recre, Parks, I'm sorry, Parks and Recreation, and worked as a Corrections Officer at the County Prison and managed his family's catering business. He is active in numerous community events run by his family and numerous charitable causes and organizations. And that makes up the Democratic ticket, Jerry Notariani and Pat O'Malley. I'm also very pleased to welcome this evening Charlie Spano, who is running as a writing campaign for this office. And again, according to League rules, if someone is, is running a bona fide campaign and they have notified the League, we will include them in our candidate events. Charlie is a resident of Scranton. He holds a Master's in Elementary Education from the University of Scranton, a Bachelor's in Education and History from Wilkes University, and he was a graduate of West Scranton High School. He has served 34 years helping Republicans. He's attended five conventions. He was Chair of the 9/11 Memorial Committee and the Flag Day Committee, and he is involved in a variety of charitable and nonprofit organizations. So, welcome to all of our candidates. We appreciate your time here this evening.
Before we start, can we all stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I want to make sure we had a flag this time. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And just a moment of silence for all of our service and men and women that are fighting overseas, that have passed away, fighting for us to have our freedoms that we take for granted. And we really appreciate everything they do for us. Just a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we'll continue with the League's program, which is for a debate with the candidates for Lackawanna County Commissioner. And as I said, the person that we drew the name to answer the first question is Charlie Spano. The first question we're going to get into right away is finances. Discuss your assessment of the county's finances, including some specific solutions to resolve the county's long-term debt. If you're not supporting tax increases but alternative revenue sources, please cite the estimated revenue. And I'll warn you, as I always do, that cutting wasteful spending is not a specific solution and therefore not an acceptable answer. Charlie, you've got 90 seconds.
Thank you very much, Andrea, and I appreciate the invitation from the League to participate in this debate. To be specific about finances, what I would like to do as a county commissioner and one of three on the board, which would have to work carefully with at least one other person, is to evaluate the budget very thoroughly for wasteful spending. Specifically, overtime costs. A couple of years ago, the Commissioners had a 4% increase in the, in taxes, and they attributed a great deal of that to overtime relating to the prison. The prison takes the biggest chunk of the county budget. There may be some issues there with management, redirection of personnel. I've managed people, budgets, met policy goals when I worked for the Census and I worked in the voter registration office, as well as running the SMART program at Willard School. So I have a lot of experience in doing that, and knowing when and what and where and how to readjust.
Thank you. Lorraine, the question goes to you.
Our current financial problems in the county stem from borrowing money. We have a $20 million debt service payment.
Lorraine, can you pull that microphone closer to you, please?
Sure. Can you hear me now?
Are we good?
Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay. And once Bill and I get into office, we're looking at lowering that debt service, either through refinancing on whatever loans can possibly be refinanced at this point, to lower our interest on those financial burdens. Also, in regards to specific areas, as I've spoken to the Scranton Times about the $1.8 million overtime for our prison workers needs to be looked at, we have a chrono system that we're paying a couple hundred thousand dollars for, and it doesn't seem to be working according to some of the articles that have come out recently. As someone who's been in business for as long as I have, I am very good at managing time and payroll, so I know exactly what needs to be done and management in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, the question goes to you.
Currently, we're, we're in debt. Lackawanna County's in $364 million worth of debt. What we need to do is we need to increase our revenue. And how we can do that is by privatizing our railroad. If we were to go out to bid and sell our railroad, we would bring in $15 million in new revenue. Additionally, what we need to do is we need to bring in new jobs. Ultimately, if we, we create a climate for new businesses to come into this area, it's going to help shoulder the burden of taxes. If we have more people working and more companies moving into the area and new businesses growing, we're going to have more tax revenue, and it's not going to affect the seniors. Also, we have a line item in the budget that's close to half a million dollars for community outreach, where we have individuals going out to borough meetings. Lorraine and I want to go out to the borough meetings and make sure we have a pulse on the community, that we're not going to task that to somebody else that will save us a half a million dollars. When we put down our revenue, new revenue sources on the debt, we're going to refinance the debt at a better rating, because currently we're at junk bond rating status, and we're going to refinance it at a fixed rate, at a better rate. And we're going to save the taxpayers money. Any man, woman, or child in this, this great county owes $1,700. So a new child born tomorrow will owe $1,700 as soon as they're here.
Thank you. Jerry, the question goes to you.
Okay, thank you. Cutting wasteful spending is not a specific answer, but it's something that has to be addressed. We do have to create new jobs. We have, do have to do things to make it, us have more of a tax base so we don't continue to increase the taxes on our senior citizens and all of the people in Lackawanna County. I'm a small businessperson. It's difficult. Every day's an adventure, but you have to look at all parts of the, the whole picture. As far as the rail authority is concerned, the county authority does not run the railroad. It is leased currently. It is actually leased, and it's done remarkably well. We've, we've created jobs along, we have 35 jobs, 30-plus jobs in Lackawanna County alone from it, and we also have new businesses that have been developed along the rail line. It, it is something that's, it's something that we're, we should talk about, but it's not, it's not a major problem in Lackawanna County. We do have a lot of problems. Reassessment's an issue. We have to, in every progressive county, and the, and the state has reassessed. We're the only one that hasn't. We have to look towards the future. We have to be, create more jobs. We have to look, get people that have been from this area and bring them back and have them be helpful, and they're willing to do that. We have to reach out and work hard. If they believe that we're doing the right things, they'll work with us, they'll do things that will make Lackawanna County a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, the question to you.
The current county debt is at approximately $226 million. All of this debt happened before the last four years. There has not been any debt incurred in the past four years. Also, our yearly amount that we pay towards this debt is over $19 million. Something that the county has never done in the past but has done for the last four years is it has audits on time, which is a huge situation that needs to be done. Our audits are good. We have one for 2011, 2012, 2013, and 2014. This is the way that we're going to be able to get out of our financial situation. This is the way we're going to get back to a good bond rating, something that we haven't had in years because of junk bond ratings. At this point, we have a surveillance fee that costs approximately $350,000 to $500,000 per year, just to keep an eye on us, to make sure that we're doing the right things. This will be eliminated, hopefully, within the next couple of months or the middle of next year. This will give us an opportunity to get a better bond rating, and that will put us in a situation where we can put the rest of our debt at a good rate, and that will be an incredible savings to the people of Lackawanna County. It's about making sure that the wasteful spending of the past is not going to happen with the fiscal future that's going to be coming in 2016. Thank you.
Thank you. Lorraine, this next question will go first to you. And I'd like to talk about reassessment. So as all of us know, Lackawanna County spent millions of dollars to begin a reassessment of property values, but stopped before the work was completed. Yet, all local governments in the county rely on property taxes and need property reassessment to keep the revenues in pace with changing service demands. What should the county do next to address the decades-old property assessments? Should it complete the unfinished reassessment? And what's your rationale? And what is your plan for that?
In regards to reassessment, I am for reassessment at a time when the citizens can afford it, when Bill and I get into office and lower the tax burden on the people and give them their 4% at least back. That's when I would be looking at reassessment, when they actually aren't going to be burdened by this. I met a woman over in Scranton, this is just one of many, a 69-year-old woman who, her husband has passed. She had all plans on using her home as her little nest egg. Come time to sell it, and she's only getting half of what it was worth and what she was planning on in her retirement. So she's sitting in her home, wondering what she's going to do now, and should a reassessment come through, she's going to be increased no matter what. She's owned her home for over 40 years. Those are the type of people I'm looking at. I'm looking at the middle class, such as myself, people that are trying to just live paycheck to paycheck, and that's going to be such a big burden on them. We have to lower the tax burden prior to a reassessment, and that's what Bill and I are trying to work at to get that done first. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, the same question to you pertaining to reassessment.
I, I believe the, the current system is outdated, most definitely. We need people to pay their fair share. What I would do is I would implore the local municipalities and school districts, it's called reverse assessment, and we've seen it to be very effective up in Covington Township. I'd implore the local municipalities to go out and put non-tax properties back on the tax roll and to assess a fair market value to manufacturing, to homes, all across the county. What that would do is it wouldn't cost any, any money to, to the county, but it would put new businesses in the area or new properties on the tax roll. But what we need to do is we need to bring in jobs. We need to bring in jobs that is going to help this county grow. We have a workforce that wants to work, and we need to provide an environment to do that. So with, if we reduce taxes, we're going to be able to go out and market this area. We've got a workforce second to none, and that's what we're focused on.
Thank you. Jerry, the question to you, what's your opinion on reassessment?
I think we absolutely need to reassess for us to be successful in competing in the future. I think Lackawanna County is a wonderful place, and we have to go forward, and the only way to do that is to reassess. It's been far too long. It, it makes total sense to do it. We do have to protect our seniors and everyone that's involved, and there's got to be a way of being able to do that. And we have to be, develop a plan to afford to pay for it. But most of the work has been done, and we can find that, and grants are available, and there are things that we can do to make it a viable option. When we do create new jobs and we do bring new businesses in, when we do let the businesses pay their fair share, it's, it, it works for everyone. It absolutely does. There's, there's no other way of doing this. We have to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, the question to you on reassessment.
Well, reassessment could be $8 million and up. My biggest concern is real simple. It's basically with most of the people on stages, we're worried about the seniors. My thoughts are basically this. I live in a house that's 18 years old. I pay approximately over $6,000 in taxes. If there is a reassessment, my taxes would drop probably down to low fours, and the people living in the houses that are over 40 years, they would go up. And at this point, it's just something that we can't afford, but it's something I think we should look into. And maybe we can get the state, I think we should be looking at actually a statewide reassessment of all the 60-some counties. That's what should be going on, because it's not happening anywhere else. And I think that that would work on behalf of the taxpayers. The other thing is this, you know, there, there is a great family that's coming into our area right now, the Chan family. They are bringing in a glass factory, and it's called Crystal Door and Window. And county government works hard on behalf of the people of Lackawanna. We made it an environment so they could come into our community. It's going to start off with 35 to 50 jobs to start. Within the next two to three years, it's going to go up to 300. If everything goes right over five to six years, it's going to be 600 and up. So I'd just like to thank the Chan family for picking Scott Township as an opportunity for their business to expand and bring in good family sustaining jobs, because that's what matters in Lackawanna County, with good benefits. That's what it's about.
Thank you. Charlie, the question to you, please, on reassessment.
Well, as the oldest guy running, I'm very happy that everybody's concerned about senior citizens. So, I am too, and I believe that in a reassessment scenario, the homestead exemption is still going to be applicable to seniors if a reassessment comes about. Now, I have stated before, and I've stated again, I would like to have a little bit more of a long runway before we actually do it. Certainly, we want to find out what occurred before, where the money went, what the evaluation of houses was at that time, so that if there is work that's still valid today after several years of not examining properties, maybe we could build on that, in addition to whatever grants that there might be. Reassessment and reevaluating properties for purpose of taxation is something that will occur, whether we like it or not, down the road at some point. The ground has to be evened out. There are high spots and low spots. That is what has skewed every phase of economic development. Koz's and other tax exemption-type programs are a recognition by government that taxes are a burden. They wouldn't do them if they weren't a barrier. So, instead of allowing or having people bear the burden of excess taxation when others are not, we need to look at doing this down the road. The thing is, everybody needs to have a fair chance to believe they have answered, had all their questions asked and answered, and their fears, fears allayed before it actually comes about.
Thank you. So the next question, let's talk about jobs. So Bill, you mentioned jobs. I think Pat has mentioned jobs as well. As a county commissioner, tell me what role should the county government play? And what can you do as a county commissioner to create living wage jobs in our county? What innovative ideas do you bring to the table? But specifically, what can a county commissioner do to impact living wage jobs?
What we can do is we can create a, a business-friendly environment. We can create an environment that is conducive for new, new employers to come into this area and for existing employers to grow. What I would like to do is I would implore at the state level legislation that would amend Act 50 and Act 52. I think this area would benefit from a CRIS program. A CRIS program would identify 130 acres where we could have new, new businesses coming in, and we can use the tax revenue from that new, you know, CRIS program to bring in new jobs. Also, I would use the TIP program, which we currently have. We've seen that be very successful up in Glen Mara, where we, we put in the shops-at-montage. If we use that program, we use the LERA program, which we currently have, and we go out and we pitch this area very hard to new businesses and also to the existing businesses. But what we need to do is we need to lower taxes. No business will come into an area where taxes are going up and where we have financial mismanagement. You know, it, you know, they're not going to move here knowing that they'll go up. So we're going to provide an environment for them that is conducive for job growth, and that's what we're going to do.
Thank you. Jerry, the question to you. What can you, as a county commissioner, do to promote living wage jobs in the county?
I think the first thing we have to do is get the people and the businesses to believe that we are doing the right thing for a change, that we're actually working at it, that we're honest, and that we're paying attention to what we're doing. I think that we can, we can go out and market the Lackawanna County much better. It's, it's a great area. It's a great place. There's a lot of good things. A lot of very successful people have come out of here. We, we have to reach out to them all across the country. When you go to the Pennsylvania Dinner in, in New York in December, there are people from all over the country that go to that from Pennsylvania, many of them from Lackawanna or northeastern Pennsylvania, that would be more than willing to come back and help us if they really believed we were trying to help ourselves. I really believe we have to market it better. We have to lower taxes. You know, we, we have to create a business-friendly environment. There's no question about those things. But they have to believe in us. We have to work harder. That's what I think.
Thank you. Pat, the question to you. What can a county commissioner do?
Well, I'll tell you what some of the county commissioners have been doing. Right at the bat in 2012, the Board of Commissioners were in a situation where they had to make a decision if there was going to be baseball in Lackawanna County. It's a tough decision. It was actually part of the campaign in 2011, and it was probably one of the best decisions that I made. Baseball stayed in Lackawanna County. And let me tell you what baseball provides in Lackawanna County. Right now, at this point, the stadium alone produces 265 full-time and part-time jobs, good jobs at the stadium. Also, the construction of the rail riders, that produced hundreds of jobs for Union Brothers and Sisters over a year and a half, to be able to stay close to their families in Lackawanna County, and it provided an amount of money for them to be able to provide for their families. Also, the stadium itself, let's talk about the hotels, the gas, the restaurants, all the other opportunities, all the little jobs that came from the fact that the stadium stayed. That's just one of the situations. Right now, at this point, we had a situation in downtown Scranton where the mall was, we didn't know what was going to happen to the mall. Well, there's a new owner there, and he really wants to make sure the mall stays what it is. It's going to be a retail mall. And what I did immediately was reached right out to him, because it mattered to us, and we wanted to make sure, and we're working with him right now for LSA grants of $750,000, because let me tell you something, the mall, when it's at capacity, there'll be hundreds of retail jobs throughout the mall itself. This is what Lackawanna County government is about. Also, we have an SBA loan waiver program, and I'd just like to just finish up, which created 152 new jobs and retained 362.
Thank you.
And beyond.
Charlie, the question goes to you, please.
Restate, please.
So, we've talked about jobs. What can you, as a county commissioner, do to bring high, living wage jobs to the county? What specifically can a county commissioner do for that?
A county commissioner can specifically work with at least one other county commissioner to make sure that our tax system is fair. That is the key burden to any business wanting to expand or come in. The folks at Crystal Window, it took several years. Economic development is not a do-it-yourself project. Took several years and a lot of people, a lot of moving parts to get them to come here. That type of thing will be necessary as we go forward. So, working with the other commissioners and working with our whole entire business community, the professionals at the University of Scranton and other universities and colleges in the area, we can get a group of people, get all our ideas together, and get out there to make sure that we can come up with a solid plan that's going to provide an environment for business development. Simply to say, we'll cut taxes here and we'll do that over there, is going to create a deficit situation that we're trying to avoid. We already have enough debt. And if anybody knows about debt, I do. And so, what we need to do is to work very hard and very carefully on evening out our taxes, getting our system fair. That'll be a great attract. Also, there's a movement about, going on now among young people and middle-class people, of freelancing. People who desire to live in a city, people who desire to use the transportation facilities to do their freelance work are necessary, and we'd like to attract them.
Thank you. Lorraine, the question to you. What can you, as a county commissioner, do to attract living wage jobs?
Well, I like to think that the business owners would have their, their wages set at what they want. I'm not necessarily in regards with the living wage. But what I would do in regards to helping businesses in the area is lower taxes. You know, as, as stated, no business is going to move here from out of the area just to come to an area where people are being removed from their homes due to the increased tax burden. We recently saw a sales tax that just came about where properties on that list were over 1,100 properties that just went up for a tax sale. Prior to that, there was an ad ran through the Scranton Times. It was 2093 people, but that was incorrect. That was only for those that were one year late. On the repository list, we currently have hundreds, if not over 1,000, of homes that are properties that were sold, and we just have them sitting there. That is not- That is not a good scenario for our county, and lowering taxes is the first place you start to help that situation. As far as helping businesses, let them know that we're here for advertising. You know, we just had a bridge fix down in Music. It took four and a half years. We had two businesses there, Blooming Idiots and Delia's Hoagie Shop, which used to be Berlous, for those of you that remember it. These two businesses currently suffered a tremendous loss. What we could have done at the county level, instead of sending newsletters out to promote the politicians in office, was to advertise these businesses to try and get them more business and show a new route for them. Things like that, when we're helping businesses that are currently hurting, that's where we need to look at as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Jerry, this next question will go to you first, and we'll do Dan two minutes on this one, okay? So there's two controversial projects that are going on now in Lackawanna County, and we want to talk about that. So both of these projects may impact the quality of life and the environment, the Keystone Landfill Expansion and also the Natural Gas Power Plant in Jessup. What are your thoughts on these projects, and what can the county do to ensure both the quality of life and that environment are protected for Lackawanna County residents? Question to you, two minutes.
I've already stated I'm against the landfill expansion. It's not something the county government has any control over. It's, you know, our only course of action is to make sure that we deal with the state and get after the state and go on it. When I ran for mayor against Jim Connors, sitting in the front here with me, who's working very hard for us, there was a leachate line that came through Greenridge. And Jimmy said, you know, that he thought we should stop that. And I honestly answered, there's nothing we can do about that. And I had people not vote for me because of that. I'm not going to sit here and tell you something that's not true. All we can do is make sure that the state does the best job that they possibly can, make sure that that's what, you know, we stay on top of that. It is not a county government situation. I'd like to tell you differently. It's not the case. We can only do what we're empowered to do. And I, again, I stated early that I was not in favor of the expansion. I'm not. I don't think it's a good thing for Lackawanna County. It's not a county government issue. Thank you.
Thank you. So Pat, the question to you. The two controversial projects, Keystone Landfill Expansion and the Natural Gas Power Plant in Jessup, what are your thoughts, and what can the county do?
Well, for landfill expansion, you know, a lot of people stood back and didn't say much to start. I was probably one of the first that came out and said, I was against the idea of the height, the width, and what it would do to our county. And like my partner said, Jerry Nocerianni, our situation is that the county cannot do much. But what we can do is make sure the EPA and DEP does what they're supposed to do. And they're the ones that are going to make the final determination of this. I, myself, am against the expansion of landfill. Getting to the other situation in the Upper Valley, that's the same situation that they're going to be into. It's about the EPA and DEP. They're the ones that are going to make the final decision in the borough. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie, the same question to you. On those two projects, what is your opinion, and what can the county do?
The county commissioners do not have legal regulatory authority over those projects. They are local issues under zoning or regulated by EPA at the federal level and the state. So I would agree with Jerry to that extent. However, having spent ten years on the board of the Lackawanna River Association and on the Governor's Twenty-First Century Environmental Commission, I would not look favorably on anything that would impact our environment in a way that the commission, as the Board of Commissioners, would have any say over. For example, I don't like the idea of long-term contracts binding anybody to anything because you don't know what kind of technology is going to change, whether it's the landfill or any other operation in the county. Secondly, we have to be very, very closely monitoring the folks at the EPA, the folks at the Pennsylvania DEP, who are responsible for regulating and controlling. So we are informed. When we're informed, I will inform the people. The key here is information. People need to have information on a regular basis. So in terms of the specific expansion in the plant, there's not a lot that the commissioners can do. It's not legally allowed. It's regulatory agencies outside and above, beyond the control of the commission. But subsidiary impacts, a chance for a forum, a chance to be a good-faith fulcrum point to provide information that people can rely on, that's what I would do.
Thank you. Lorraine, the question to you, please.
Well, I'm against the landfill expansion. I'm not against businesses expanding. However, that expansion was a little bit too large. The initial proposal, I guess we're going to have to watch it and see. And I am for any new business that comes into the arena. Thanks.
Thank you. Bill, the same question to you.
As a county commissioner, my number-one concern is the health and safety and well-being of our citizens. And I do have concerns about the landfill. I think that the sheer size and scope of the project is very large. I think to go out for fifty years is too long.
Bill, can you pull that microphone closer, please?
Yes. I think it's too long. I think we need to work with DEP to make sure all the regulations are being followed. We need to reach out to DEP and make sure that we're partnering with them. We have the Conservation District. We need to use our own Conservation District to make sure monitoring is taking place and that we're safe. As for the Energy Power Plant, I think that there are some serious questions we need to ask. We need to see where automatic shut-offs will be placed. God forbid there is an accident. We need to touch base with FERC. We need to do an environmental impact study. On day one, I would request an environmental impact study to see how it's going to affect us. That's something that hasn't been done. I have background in the energy field, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to make sure we're safe. And how I'm going to do that is I'm going to ask pointed questions on a FERC document where they have to respond, and I will make sure that we're safe. And I want to see plans. I want to see how it's going to affect us. I do want to see job growth, and I think that it can be done safely. But I'm going to make sure it is done safely because everybody out here in Lackawanna County would be my number-one concern.
Thank you. So Pat, this next question goes to you first. Ninety seconds to respond, and I want to talk about the land bank. Can you tell us what are the advantages and disadvantages of the proposed land bank, and do you support or oppose it?
I completely support the land bank. I'm actually the chairman at this point. The city of Scranton was unable to formulate the land bank, so the county took on the duty. We're in a situation where the land bank is going to be a good opportunity for us. This will eliminate blighted properties. It'll give us an opportunity to put properties back on the tax base. And one of the bigger things is going to help us to develop businesses in the community because we have a lot of property out there that is not utilized, and the land bank is going to give us an opportunity to be able to utilize it. This is just another great tool that's for our economic toolbox. I believe the land bank is going to be very helpful to the two hundred and fourteen thousand citizens of Lackawanna County, and we will be having a meeting in the next few weeks.
Thank you. Charlie, the question to you, please.
Thank you, Andrea. I attended the city council meeting a while back when the land bank issue was first proposed. I have the PowerPoint presentation at home. I find the idea an excellent one for retrieving and returning certain properties to the tax rolls. I think it's something that's long overdue. In a little town, a little borough like West Pittston can do it and do it successfully, it's certainly something that could be easily replicated here in Scranton and then, of course, in Lackawanna County. What we have to make sure is that the tax structure is fair so that people don't have to lose their properties and get them in the land bank in the first place. Now, in that respect, for the land bank and for other properties like that, any kind of program or policy that would help ease the burden, level the playing field, and produce an environment conducive to job growth and expansion is something that I definitely would want to work very hard at. And being a commissioner, a full-time commissioner, as required by the Home Rule Charter, without outside distractions or any other influences, is something I could dedicate my time to, as I have for forty-five years in serving the community specifically and at large.
Thank you. Lorraine, the question to you, please. Yes.
Let me use my rebuttal.
You have to wait. You have to wait until everybody goes around.
Okay.
So, Lorraine, the question goes to you. What are the advantages and disadvantages of the proposed land bank, and do you support or oppose it?
Actually, I would have been interested in what Pat had to say because I wanted to ask him a question. You know, in regards to the land bank, I'm not in favor of this program. I've seen what it's done down in Pittston. I see why they have to use it. If we weren't overtaxing our citizens, we wouldn't need it to begin with. I think that using casino money, which is what the LSA money is for all of you that don't know, to purchase properties that were taken off people that the casino money was supposed to help them keep is a little bit backwards, and the system is a little bit skewed, as far as I'm concerned. I'd have to see what exactly they are setting up. It's already set up. It's a done deal. There's really not much we can do at this point, which I think that the incoming commissioners should have had the opportunity to decide what was going to happen with that, and it should not have been done with this lame-duck session, which, that upsets me, that this program was implemented prior to us coming into office. If it's a sunset program, I might agree with that. If it's just to clean up the properties that are on our repository list at this point that this administration has left us with, then I would say, okay, we'll have to look at that. But we're definitely going to have to look at and see what the program is written up as and why they can't just do this at the local level to begin with and change the zoning and without having to use casino money for seed money, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of casino money for seed money, to start this whole program up. Can't we work with the municipalities to go ahead and get this done prior to any of this happening? That's what my questions would have been prior to it happening. So if Pat does rebut this, I hope he would answer that for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Bill, the question to you.
Could you repeat the question?
So the question is, what are the advantages and disadvantages of the proposed land bank, and do you support or oppose it?
I do think the land bank can be a useful tool. I think that we could join parcels of blighted property together, make it a marketable property, and put it back on a tax roll. I think that it's just another tool. I also think what we need to focus on is economic development, and this is part of that. What I would like to do is lower taxes so that we do have less properties being put into this process. But it is, it's a self-sustaining process, the land bank, and I, at the moment, I'd support it, and I would need to see some more of the intra-workings and see if it's fully funded.
Thank you. Jerry, the question to you.
Originally, I was the first commissioner candidate to bring that to light, that we should do it. It's been, we've been able to do it since 2012. It was a state law that was passed. It's a positive tool. You could get blighted properties back on the tax roll, whether you give them to people or sell them reasonably, get them back on the tax roll. It's a positive as far as that's concerned. I really don't understand the downside of it at all. I'm, you know, I think it lowers taxes the more properties are on the tax rolls. I'm thoroughly in favor of it. Thank you.
Pat, did you want to rebut? You can use a minute.
Yeah, I just wanted to go a little further. You know, adding property to our tax rolls just to broaden our tax base. I mean, that's where we could save a lot of money. There's a lot of property out there. There's a lot of opportunity for us to get a lot of development in our community, and this land bank is going to be very helpful for that situation. And you know what? You got to have funds, and you have to move forward, and we needed to have funds to be able to do this. So that's why we're at where we're at now. The land bank is something that I think is going to be a great tool, like I said, in the economic toolbox, which there's many other tools that can be used for development in the community. This is just one extra one for us to look at and utilize.
Thank you. Did you, Lorraine?
In this program, the county gets to bid on these homes that were lost to tax sale. Is that the only homes you're looking at, or are you looking at properties that are also, in addition to that, that we couldn't merge? What are you looking at here?
Okay, wait, wait. This is, if Pat wants to rebut, he's using his rebuttal time to rebut. That's his choice to do it, okay? So you can ask questions, but it's up to the candidates whether or not they answer them, and you would be using your time to answer it.
I'm not using my minute. I already explained it.
Okay. Do I still have time on my rebuttal, then?
Yes.
Okay. Well, the way I see it is, we currently have, like I told you earlier, two thousand and ninety-three properties were in the Scranton Times on August twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth. They were a year behind. They were a year behind taxes because they're struggling. And then the next day, we had a list that was over eleven hundred people that were going up for this tax sale, one of which was St. Mary's Center. Now, there's jobs right there that are being lost because of tax sale. People are being burdened with overtaxation. They say we have a surplus. Well, then give some of that surplus back to the citizens. You know, I'm just, I'm just a little bit frustrated with the fact that we have some surpluses that was paid for on the backs of the taxpayer, and we have all these properties that were lost within the past four years since 2009, which is unprecedented. So, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on. The next question is one I seem to ask in every debate, and that pertains to consolidation. And Charlie, this question will go to you first. What role should the county commissioners play in promoting cooperation between municipalities, school districts, and county government in order to reduce expenses for all three taxing bodies? And what programs or services should be considered for consolidation? You have ninety seconds.
I have promoted this from the beginning, that the county commissioners, the county should work very, very closely with the townships, boroughs, and cities. We need to enhance the joint purchasing process. We need to see if there is a way under which we can help the townships and the boroughs to make large-scale purchases through the county and redistribute it proportionally to those townships and boroughs that participated in that. This already occurs to some extent with the joint purchasing, but I think it could be enhanced on a lot of different levels, plus which to try to work very closely with those townships and boroughs and the cities in our county and possibly over the border into other counties if they would like to, to see what services we can share. What are other places doing that we could learn from? Again, it's a matter of information and communication. A full-time commissioner has the time to do that without any distractions or outside influences, and I could do that.
Thank you. Lorraine, the question goes to you. What role should the county commissioners play in promoting cooperation between the municipalities, school districts, and county government in order to reduce expenses for all three taxing bodies? And what programs or services specifically should be considered for consolidation?
I actually think that Commissioner Washon, Commissioner O'Brien already worked on that and did a pretty good job. When we were looking at all the things that they had caught in regards to sharing expenses, they even, I believe, put in Bruce Smallcomb's idea to share equipment. I can't ask him, but anyway, I believe that was one of their programs. So I believe they did a good job. I think what we have to look at now is consolidation of offices, and that's where Bill and I will be looking at to lower some of the expenses. And of course, we would work with the municipalities, and getting rid of this community relations department with us going to the meetings instead of hiring somebody to go to these meetings and report back to us is one of the areas we want to work at in regards to helping get more transparency and assistance through all the municipalities. The other issue is to have our meetings throughout the county at different times in the evening so that regular citizens throughout the different boroughs and townships can attend so that we can hear their concerns as well, rather than have a ten a.m. meeting every other Wednesday in Scranton once people are working. And we've been fighting for this for years, and as a matter of fact, I believe that was one of the promises that was made already by one of the current commissioners sitting up here. So that was never done, and that's one of the areas that we're looking at in regards to that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, the question to you, please.
Could you repeat the question?
The question is, what role should county commissioners play in promoting cooperation between the municipalities, school districts, and county government in order to reduce expenses for all three taxing bodies? And what programs or services should be considered for consolidation?
Specifically, I think roads and bridges. We saw under Bruce Smallcomb, as Lorraine touched upon, where we had more cooperation. We went out and, I believe, jointly purchased a zipper to be able to resurface roads, and it was done efficiently and effectively, and it was done in-house. And I commend Bruce on the commitment that he did for the taxpayers. It saved us a lot of money. I think we need to go beyond even municipalities. I think we need a community-based approach. We need to reach out to the universities, the technical schools, and we need to see how we can attack this economic development problem that this area's been stuck with. You know, we need to get a panel of people together. When commissioners are elected, they're not experts in all of the fields. They may be experts in some of the fields, but what we need to do is we need to rely on some of our local experts to provide us with insight of how we could tackle specific problems. And I'd like to, to reach out to the technical schools and make sure that we're providing a quality workforce when we go out to solicit new businesses, because I know we have the people that have the drive and that want to work. And we need to bring in new businesses so that they have a place to work, create an environment that's business-friendly.
Thank you. Jerry, the question to you, please.
It comes down to the same thing. Many of these programs are in place, we just don't take advantage of them properly. But the schools, the universities, the non-for-profits that are in the area, they all have to be talked with and dealt with and reached out to, to make them understand that we're all in this together. We all have to work together on this. We can, you know, the universities and the colleges are a very, very important part of what we are in Lackawanna County and northeastern Pennsylvania. We don't take advantage of the situations, of the positions that we're in, and we just continually put ourselves against each other, as opposed to trying to work together. There's no doubt that we can, we can make it a better, better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, the question to you, please.
Yeah, actually, our current roads and bridges, they work with the DPWs throughout the different boroughs and townships. You know, it's about everybody, you know? All the municipalities, townships, they're all in the same boat like we are. You're trying to save money, you're trying to look for different ways. And, you know, we try to cooperate and work with everyone we possibly can, and the commissioners' doors are always open for any way that we could possibly find a savings. So county government has been doing it, and we'd like to get more involved and bring more government into it. One of the things I just want to bring up really quick since I have a minute, county government has been leased out beyond belief. We had a lease that was over 10 years old, just came up just recently. Now it's month to month. We have a couple more leases that are still going. We have approximately $1.5 million in leases as we sit here right now. All of them are basically at a point now where those leases are run out. We're in a situation where we have an opportunity to get one building, one opportunity for all of Lackawanna County taxpayers to have a building that's paid for and owned by them, and that's something that our administration is going to do in 2016. We are going to make this for the people of Lackawanna County, because they deserve it, they need it, and it's part of who they are. It's your government, you should own it. And it's $1.5 million, and the way the numbers are working out right now, there will be an absolute savings. Thank you.
Thank you. Lorraine, this question will go first to you. You brought up the issue of prison overtime. What are the causes that contribute to spending for overtime at the Lackawanna County prison? And what action would you, as a commissioner, be able to take to reduce the expense?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, it was blamed on a machine, that people weren't timing their hours in from the chrono system. I did look up this system online, and it was so durable that they were actually, that was one of their promos on the internet, was they were squirting it with a fire hose to show how it's so indestructible. So I'm not sure, then another story came out that it wasn't broken, and that wasn't a true statement, so I'm really not sure what's happening there. I would have to get into the prison and see what's actually going on. As far as overtime is concerned, you have to make sure that you have a good scheduler in place. I mean, if you don't have a good scheduling person in place, then you're going to have problems when a mix-up, somebody's double, you have a double person scheduled, and there was a mix-up. So in regards to that area, what happens when it's a state program? Do you have to keep them there because of unions? What are the contracts? There's a lot of different things that go into it. So you have to be a manager that manages time and does a good schedule to know, you know, how you could save on your overtime. If you don't have time cards to look at, to know how many hours are being done, and the system isn't working, then I guess I would have to say, who's monitoring the henhouse here? Who's writing down the times? I don't know. It didn't say in the article. I'm not privy to that information, but it's something that I'm certainly willing to look at and try and fix with Bill, and fix whatever needs to be fixed, and I know how to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, the question to you. What are the causes that contribute to spending for overtime at the prison? And what action can you, as a commissioner, take to reduce the expense?
The causes that are contributing to the problem are, we have inmates that are not committing crimes here. We're housing inmates, and we're using the prison to make money. We've seen one judge that was very much against that, because what we're doing is we're bringing in state prisoners, and we're bringing their families into this area. But what I think we have at the prison, and I think that it's been well documented, is we have an institutional problem. We have an institutional problem from the top down. That's from the commissioner's office, all the way down to the warden's office. We've seen correctional officers charged with very bad crimes. We have some great men and women there, and we need to, I think, put together a task force to recommend, with experts in that field, to recommend what we need to do. We had a correctional officer who was taking advantage of female inmates. We just had one other correctional officer that assaulted a gentleman that was tied up, and it was caught on video. So we have an institutional problem. We need to provide the correct training, and we need to get rid of the offenders that are there, and stop using it as a way to make money, because what we're doing is we're bringing violent people into this community for money. We're selling the community out. And again, as a commissioner, I'm going to make sure that your health and well-being is number-one priority. We're not going to make money operating a prison. We're going to operate a prison to house people that commit crimes here.
Thank you. Jerry, the question goes to you, please.
Prisons are expensive to run, and it's mandated by the state for us to do that. I think the problem is with the management of the prison. I really believe that. Guards are forced. It's mandatory overtime. And when that happens, they continue to use their sick time and their vacation time, and creates more overtime. We don't have enough prison guards. We don't. There's no question about it. And the logic behind that is that it's too expensive to hire new employees because of the expense of retirement and packages for their healthcare. It doesn't balance out. It doesn't make any sense. It's not, it's not a good, sound business decision. I have to do that every day when I go to work. I have to make a decision that makes sense. We don't do that. There is a prison board in place that means well, but it doesn't work that way all the time, and I think that with there's new administration, it'll work much better. I have an idea of how to go about it. I've talked with the incoming president judge. I think it's important that we go forward. I really think it's a management problem within the prison itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, the question goes to you, please.
Nobody wants to spend money on prison. That's just fact. It's the way it is. There's a lot of different things that have to do with the impact of the overtime at the jail. Some of it's FLMA leave, some of it's PRIA, that's state mandates, that we just can't get around. And overtime, you're stuck on a mandatory overtime. It's the way it is. It's an emergency situation type of job. I did it for 17 years. There's some great men and women that work out there that are corrections officers. They deal with MERSs, AIDS, HIV, hepatitis, spit, vomit. You name the situation, you name the hanging, you name the slicing, you name the circumstance that comes up. The job is tough. And yes, there has been some people that have been arrested for out there. There's no way to open up someone's mind and figure out exactly what they're doing. But the vast majority of the people that work the Lackawanna County Jail, or prison, are great corrections officers, not prison guards, corrections officers, who do a great job every single day on behalf of the people of Lackawanna County. And when Jerry Notariani and myself get to Lackawanna, get to 2016, after where we get sworn in, we're going to work to make the Lackawanna County prison a professional place to work, where the corrections officers are happy to be involved in their county prison and happy to go to work. And that's what we're going to work on, because there is some issues, and we're going to fix them, and we're starting to fix them now.
Thank you. Charlie, the question to you, please.
I think that the issue of overtime and the cost overruns in the prison are identifiable as a management situation. The oversight, the management, the whatever negotiation might have occurred in the contracts needs to be tightened up. It's easy to say, well, that's the way it is, and sort of throw up your hands, and this is how it's been for 16 years. That's easy to do. The hard part is to sit down and thoroughly go through every single aspect, seeing what is required, looking at the contracts, and, if necessary, adding on extra personnel to even out the overtime, so that, a situation like substitute teachers in a school district. If you have a lot of teachers bailing out, it may be morale factor, and you're incurring a lot of extra expense by bringing in substitutes. Same thing as, the analogy holds in the prison. If people are dissatisfied, or they are in some way using up their leave time and creating a situation where new people have to be brought in on a temporary basis, maybe one or two or three or four should be hired on a permanent basis to even it out. The investment of that, plus the oversight that is absolutely necessary, and clearly it is because this is a problem, and this prison's been a chronic problem for years, is to have a tighter management oversight.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we are running out of time, and I have one last question, and as much as I hate to do one-minute responses, Dan, we're going to have to go to one minute on this one. So the question would go first to Bill, and the question for you is, realistically, what is the top accomplishment that you want to see achieved if you're elected? And how would a voter be able to measure your success? What is the top thing you want to achieve as a commissioner?
I want to make sure you're safe, your health and well-being. I want to make sure, I want to make sure we have economic growth in this county. I want to make sure there are jobs for people, and we need to create an environment, and I want to make sure your taxes are lower. People can't shoulder the burden of high taxes anymore. We've seen a tax increase under the current administration that is, is taking it to record-setting levels. We need to make sure our people can afford to pay their taxes, and that we have an environment that's conducive to business. That's what I'm going to do. And you can measure it by the unemployment rate in four years if elected, because Lorraine and I want to make sure that there are jobs for people that want to work, because we have tremendous amount of hard-working people in this county.
Thank you. Jerry, so if you're elected, realistically, what is the top accomplishment you want to see achieved? And how would a voter be able to measure your success?
They will be able to measure the success of Pat and myself by the fact that taxes will not go up, and hopefully will come down. And that's important, and that'll be easy to figure out when you go to pay your tax bill. And by the economic growth in Lackawanna County, the new jobs created. It's the most important thing we have to do, and that's how you lower taxes, by creating jobs, by expanding your tax base. It's increase revenue, decrease spending. That's, that's business. That's life. That's what we have to do. So we're going to increase the revenue in Lackawanna County, and we're going to decrease the spending. Simple. It'll be easy to gauge. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, you have one minute. Realistically, what is the top accomplishment you want to see achieved if you're re-elected? And how would a voter be able to measure your success?
First and foremost, we got to hold the line on taxes. Our senior citizens just can't afford it. Second of all, I want to work with the governor's office and the leaders of the general assembly for property tax relief. This is needed right now, and that's something we have to reach out and make sure that this happens in the near future. Third, it's about jobs. And like I said before, you know, reaching out to the new owner of the mall, knowing that there's jobs that are available, reaching out to other businesses, trying to bring them into your community, making a conducive environment, that's what myself and Jerry Notarian are going to make happen. It's about making sure that people are being able to pay for their needs, and that's what our administration's going to be about. It's going to be about jobs, it's going to be about holding line on taxes, and hopefully we're going to be able to get some property tax relief, working with the assembly and the governor.
Thank you. Charlie, the question to you. Realistically, what is the top accomplishment you want to see achieved if you're elected? And how would a voter measure your success?
I'm not going to vote to raise your county real estate taxes. I'm going to work with the other commissioners to make sure that we squeeze the budget annually to get as much out of it as ending the wasteful spending and keeping costs under control. That'll be a very easy metric to determine after a year, and two, and three, and four. We need to be very aware of how the budget now going on in Harrisburg is affecting all of our county's social services. We have to be very smart about what we do with money in the future in case this situation occurs again. I have worked with Republicans, Democrats, independents, and non-voters in a variety of situations. I have a lot of experience in working with people across any kind of divide that they may have with a letter after their name. I will be a full-time commissioner, working very hard on behalf, and since I'm the oldest guy running, seniors will know that I'm in there fighting for them.
Thank you. And Lorraine, the question goes to you. Realistically, what is the top accomplishment you want to see achieved if you're elected? And how would a voter be able to measure your success?
The top priority for me is to lower the taxes for the people, and they can measure that when they get their bills, and when they can stay in their home and no longer have to give it up to a tax sale. I don't like the list that I'm seeing coming out, and I want to stop that. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes the question-and-answer part of our debate this evening. Before we start the round of closing statements for our candidates, I just want to remind everyone that the League of Women Voters is a nonprofit volunteer organization. If you like the things that we do, if you want to support us, on the way out, we'll have league members with a basket. We always are grateful for your financial contribution, which helps cover some of the costs that we incur as volunteers for the work that we do. So we would appreciate your support. With that, we did draw names for who would give the first closing statement first, and that will be Lorraine Cummings. Lorraine, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you, and thank you to the Women's League of Voters. Thank you for the University of Scranton. Thank you to ECTV, and thank you all for attending tonight. I wish this room was packed. I am running for this office because I am tired of seeing people losing their homes to a tax. I am an elder care geriatric nurse. I have been a nurse for over 25 years, basically my entire adult life. Pat, I'm with those prison correction officers because I suffer the same fate with the different areas of hepatitis, AIDS, vomit, and everything else, so I know exactly what they're going through. I care for the people of our county. I have cared for the people of our county throughout my entire life, and I don't see that this administration is helping them. I see that this administration and previous administrations have brought us to a point where tough decisions have to actually be made. Not a tough decision to raise taxes, that isn't the tough decision I'm looking for. Anybody can do that. Anybody can raise your taxes and say they did a good job, because, look, we have a surplus. I'm sorry, but that's not the truth, that's not the answer, and that's not what I plan on doing if elected with Bill Jones as our teammate, my teammate, together. You know, I'm just very happy that I had this opportunity to be here, and I hope that you all look very closely at our backgrounds and what we have to say in regards to our platforms. And I've been following this county for a lot of years, watching what's been going on at the commissioners' election, or commissioners' meetings during the day when I can get there. I think that another important issue is that they have to be provided to the people at night so that you all know what's coming at you. You all know what a Wi-Fi program is. You all know what a land bank is, that you're aware of it so that you can make an informed decision. So thank you for coming out. I hope that I can count on your support and your vote November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine Cummings. Thank you, Lorraine. Bill, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum. I'd like to thank everybody that came out, and I'd like to thank everybody at home. Lackawanna County's at a pivotal point. In the past, we were the leaders of economic development, not just in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, but nationally. We did some great things. We accomplished many large feats. What I want to do is I want to be the powerhouse that we should be. We should be an economic powerhouse here. We have a workforce that is second to none, and we have a trained workforce. We have universities and technical schools that I want to make sure that we're coordinating with when Lorraine and I are elected. Lorraine and I, Lorraine and I have a plan. We want to reduce your taxes. We want to reduce your county debt. It's going to be $364 million that you'll owe, $1,700 per person. We also want to reduce the unemployment here. We have a plan in place, and we're going to put that plan into action to make sure that we have an environment for jobs. I want to thank, you know, everybody for coming out again. I want to thank, you know, everybody for coming out again. And on November 3rd, it's crucial that you get out and you vote, and I, I hope you take a look at all of our backgrounds. I want to put my business experience, private business experience, to work for you. I also want to put my seven years as being an elected official in the third largest municipality to work for you. We're going to do this, and we're going to do this together. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration, and I ask that you turn out and vote for Lorraine Cummings and Bill Jones on November 3rd.
Thank you, Bill Jones.
I'd like to thank everyone, too, for coming. Thank the Women's League. I'm more than willing to work with anyone on this stage. I, I hope to be elected with Pat, but whether it's Pat or anyone else here, I'm more than glad to do that. It's not about politics. As a former county chairman, city chairman, it's not Democrats and Republicans. It's working together to make Lackawanna County a better place. I ran again because I hate to see our kids not have the opportunity to come back. They can choose not to, but they should at least be able to have that choice, and that's not the case anymore. And the schools and the universities are a tremendous asset, and they come here and they get educated, and they leave. I don't, I think that, same thing with the medical college. There's, there's so many great things here. I want to give them the opportunity. Let them have a choice. If they, they want to come back, fine. If they don't, that's their choice. But they don't have that opportunity now, and I think we have to change that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry Notariani. Pat, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the viewing audience for tuning in tonight. You know, from the ageified, my father, the late Paul Hook O'Malley, took me down to Weston Field, and it's a very poor section of Scranton. And, you know, he trained kids because he wanted to make sure that they could actually, they could protect themselves. And it didn't matter what age, eight to 80. He was an amazing man. And it was a great opportunity to be there with him by his side as a young boy. But, you know, it's horrible to say, but tragedy has hit our family numerous times. And every tragedy that we've ever had, we've taken a minus and made it a plus. When my sister died at the hands of her strange husband, June 9, 1980, that was probably the most pivotal moment in my whole entire life at 11 years of age. From that moment forward, I knew that my goal was about giving and working hard on behalf of the people of Lackawanna County. Just in our family alone, just the charities and everything that we're involved in, we make sure that the needy are helped, and this is something that we're about. We work on behalf of the Women's Resource Center. We work on behalf of the American Society. We care about the 214,000 citizens of Lackawanna County. And as an elected official, whether it was a school board director or as a commissioner, I've always worked hard on behalf of the citizens. Whether it was the building of a new school that we definitely needed, or it was the chance that we were going to need to save the parents' money on uniforms, uniform policies, we made sure that we did the right things. And as a commissioner, we made a lot of tough decisions, and one of them was keeping AAA baseball in Lackawanna County, and we did it. And I believe that in the next four years, Jerry Notariani and myself are going to have an opportunity to do great things. And all I can ask is of the viewing audiences, you know who I am. You know who Jerry Notariani is. So, on Tuesday, November 3rd, please make the right choice. Vote O'Malley and Notariani.
Thank you. And Charlie, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you, Andrea, and the league, and all the viewers and the audience here, and I agree that you should make the right choice on November 3rd and write in my name for county commissioner. I stand apart from the party bosses and the string pullers. I want to put the 45 years of experience I've had and the 35 years when the people of this city and county entrusted me with their children, their girls and their boys, 10,000 kids I have taught in 35 years. I have a lot of experience at every level of government, from the census to the school district. My only allegiance will be to you, the voter. Not a party boss, not a Harrisburg string puller. I will be a full-time commissioner, working hard for you all the time. I'm not looking to build a political career. I already had a career. It was a great career. I'm only doing this because I see a lot of challenges coming for counties, this county in particular, down the road the next few years, and I want to put my experience to work for you, only for you. And as a senior citizen myself, you'll have an advocate on the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.